Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of addresses, can we roll call please?
Yes, Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Wetton, Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Commissioner Good, Commissioner Blaney.
Here.
Commissioner Biggs.
Here.
And Advisory Member Matt Wesley.
Here.
Advisory Member David Quay.
Here.
And Advisory Member David Rose.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and glad to have a meeting off of schedule. Typically, the foundation is met on a quarterly basis. Tonight is more of a working-type meeting in terms of we're trying to get some information out there in an effort to be prepared to make some decisions. So we all are excited about that opportunity. First on the agenda, we have our selection. We've put out RFPs for an independent auditor to help us in our audit as it's dictated legislatively through statute. And we had a committee that was put together to sort through, I think we had six, if I'm not mistaken, I think we had six people respond to that RFP. Committee has narrowed it down to two different groups who are both here tonight. And what we'd like to do is have them give a, and all the board members, of course, also have had the material for quite some time now, like to have the two firms give their presentation. And it should be in the 15 to 20-minute range, if that works for you. And then at the conclusion of the presentations, we'll have a discussion and hopefully be in a position where we can be prepared to decide on who we'd like to use as our foundation audit. So first on the agenda, as far as time goes, would be Katz, Sapper, and Miller. I believe they're here tonight. So welcome.
Welcome.
So glad to have the two of you here, and I'll allow you to introduce yourselves and then go through the presentation material. And we'll also have an opportunity for the board members to ask any questions they might have about background credentials and that sort of thing.
Okay, sure. My name's Scott Schuster. I'm the audit partner, partner in charge of not-for-profit governmental services with Katz, Sapper, and Miller. Thirty-three years in practice, 19 years with Katz, Sapper, and Miller. Most of that 19 years I've spent in charge of this practice group. Just what else would you want to know? Audit, I oversee probably roughly 125 not-for-profit and governmental entities. And we've got a list in here. We'll kind of go through that in detail.
I'm Amanda Horvath. I'm a director in our audit group with a focus in not-for-profit and governmental work. I've got 17 years of experience, mostly in public accounting. I also had a couple of years in corporate. And I don't work on quite as many as Scott, not 125, but I pretty much touch all of our not-for-profit governmental audits from a technical expertise perspective at some point.
So we're going to walk through this handout. Your client service team, we've already introduced the two of us. The third member is Trent Parkinson. Trent's an audit manager. He specializes within our not-for-profit governmental practice. He has a lot of not-for-profit and governmental clients. Just a little bit of background about KSM. We're the largest Indiana-based CPA firm. We have 42 partners, 350 staff. The firm's kind of broken down within industry groups, if you can imagine. We've been around 75 years, so it's, you've got construction, manufacturing, retail, a little bit of everything. Not-for-profit, we have about 30 people that specialize in this practice. So the people that would be on your engagement are people that specialize specifically in this area. We listed some of the select not-for-profit client references. I guess just to note, some of these I want to pull out. Impact is a Crown Point, some of these that are in the area. Impact is located in Crown Point. John W. Anderson Foundation is an audit client located here in Valparaiso. And Pines Village Retirement Community is also in Valparaiso. And then if you kind of look through the list, a lot of these not-for-profits have foundations. Children's Bureau has a foundation. Eli Lilly and Company Foundation, that's the employee foundation, not the endowment. Indiana Masonic Home Foundation's a significant-sized foundation. Ivy Tech Foundation is also a client of significant size. John W. Anderson's one of the larger ones on the list. Pacers Foundation and Artur School also has a foundation. So several, we work with a lot of foundations. It's definitely an area that we're used to interacting with. Governmental client references, you know, we just wanted to make you aware, if we know this is a not-for-profit entity, we did reach out to the State Board of Accounts. It is a newer type entity, and we asked them about, you know, one of the questions we had is, are they a governmental foundation or a not-for-profit foundation? And there's different accounting, governmental accounting standards apply to the governmental foundations, financial accounting standards apply to the not-for-profits. So there's, you could go down two paths as far as what accounting standards apply. State Board of Accounts indicated that you would be a not-for-profit, can follow what we call FASB standards, so that's the expectation there. They did say that you would be a component unit of the county, or they thought that. So that's something that, you know, whoever's charged with that with the county will want to, maybe they already have followed up, but that, their indication would be that you would be a component unit of the county. So we just kind of mentioned these governmental clients. This is something, you know, we probably have a larger base of governmental clients than most firms are going to see. It's kind of a niche area. A lot of firms either do consulting in this area. There's very few quasi-governmental entities out there to audit. State Board of Accounts audits most everything. So this is kind of something unique to us. So, you know, we do have a relationship with the State Board of Accounts. That may help, you know, as far as your interactions with how you roll up in your county, if that's what's required. And Amanda's kind of going, she's going to walk through our audit approach. We'll let her talk about that.
Okay. So we're on page eight for those following along with the presentation. So I just have a few bullet points here, but I'm going to go into a little more detail. Make sure, my voice doesn't really carry.
We hear you. Let me hear.
So our staffing approach, we really try to choose the right people for each engagement. And one of the reasons that Trent was selected as the manager on this job is because he has the not-for-profit experience as well as working with component units of the state. So again, like Scott said, we think that that can be valuable to you guys because of our relationship with the State Board of Accounts. And he's also on several of those clients that we've mentioned on the previous pages. We really attempt to maintain staff continuity, which makes everything go smoother. You're going to be communicating with the same people from year to year. And we try to really leverage staff, too, to allow that, them to come up, you know, and then if there is some sort of turnover, it's really smooth because we've developed these staff underneath that have been on the engagement for several years. So staff continuity is really important to us, and our turnover rate is less than most CPA firms. We really focus on retention at our firm. As far as planning, planning's really a key area in the audit. We spend a lot of time in this area. And one of the big things we do is, we call them internal control walkthroughs. So we'll walk through your processes. We look at the high-level controls. So that's things like this, having a board that's governing the organization and meeting and keeping minutes, down to how are you looking at your contracts, selecting your investment advisor and things like that. And then we'll go into a little bit more detail on the investment side, since that's pretty much, at this point, the only activity in the foundation. Looking at, do you have an up-to-date investment policy? Looking at the custodian, making sure they have, there's this thing called a service auditor's report. So we'll look at those, and that helps us understand their internal controls. We'll look at what kind of reporting you're getting and performance monitoring of your advisors in that process. And then eventually, when you're making grants, we'll look at that process and the disbursements that are going out, as far as the approval process. If that's adequate, what are you looking at to select to as provided grants and things like that? We'll also be sure to talk to someone on the foundation board. We want to make sure any concerns that you have are addressed during our audit. In particular, we always ask about fraud. We're required to make certain inquiries about fraud. But then we'll just ask more generally, you know, do you have any areas you're concerned about? For year-end procedures, again, we're going to be focusing on investments because that's what you have. We'll look, we'll confirm the investments. We'll do some analytics where we're comparing the performance to benchmarks and to prior years to make sure that makes sense. We may do a little bit more in the valuation area with the municipal bonds, with the mutual funds. Those are, it's really easy to get a quota market price with the municipal bonds. Sometimes those pricing are coming directly from the individual that holds those, or the entity that holds those. So you have to make sure that those valuations are reasonable. And then when you do make grants, that process will add a little bit of complexity. We'll be looking at making sure there are proper approvals. We may confirm some if they're of certain size and vouching those to the transactions to make sure that they were recorded to the entity that the information says they were. On the wrap-up side, so I'm thinking with your engagement, we can come up and probably spend a day talking to people or better part of a day getting our planning done. But a lot of this could be done from our office because it's going to be mainly based on these investment statements. So that's how I envision it looking, but we're pretty flexible on that. We can come up here and do all the work if you want us to. And the wrap-up side, our review process, it would go through me and Scott, and then there's also, we also have every single one of our audit and review engagements go through someone who's independent to the audit team. That's a director or partner that reviews it to make sure that it makes sense and it meets our firm policies and professional standards. Communications of the foundation board, if something comes up that's pretty significant, we'll be communicating earlier. If everything goes smoothly, it'll be mainly on the back end, aside from that initial conversation in the front. And we like to provide a presentation that shows some financial highlights and our required communications. There are certain things we're required to communicate from our professional standards, as well as any recommendations we have for improvement. Kind of quick overview of our audit approach. I know one other thing we included in your packet is just kind of a separate, there's a lot of changes coming through on the not-for-profit side right now. And so this is something we had put together for our clients, shows the reporting changes that are coming through, the financial accounting standards toward our FASB. So we just wanted to include that for anyone who is interested. It's probably a lot more detail than what you want to.
Yeah, some of that could be early adopted. So, I mean, you could consider, you would probably want to think about that right from the start instead of changing it in a year or two. It's effective a couple of years away. Amanda is from this area, I'll throw in the personal appeal, and her parents still reside here. So that's kind of how we've gained some of these clients up here.
I grew up by the ski slope. Everybody knows where that's at, right?
Our version of one, anyway.
Yes. I didn't know when I was a kid.
Any questions at this point to these folks?
The only question I have is basically, I think you touched on it early in the presentation. I think we have a fairly unique, statutorily-created animal here. And I think we, you know, whether we're government-adjacent or we're not-for-profit, I think we're going to have, I'm not sure we have a foot firmly in either, as the rest of the world would view us. I think we're going, we need, ultimately, what we need from our auditors, the ability to deal with that. I think we're going to be in some uncharted territory moving forward. I think one of the things that, you know, obviously, we're created by statute. The statute's given us some outlines on investing guidelines. I think one of the things that is quickly going to come to light is the fact that those investment guidelines that the statute is telling us to follow aren't necessarily what the standards are in the complete private foundation world out there, okay? And I think you hit on some of those key things, that we are going to have some interplay between the State Board of Accounts, us, the IRS, the state, because I think we're the only ones that have utilized the statute so far. I'm no, and frankly, I'm not sure that we're not the first in the country to do something along these lines. So we're going to need the knowledge and the flexibility to be able to kind of weave our way through the gauntlet here of being, at the end of the day, obviously, everyone's sitting up, all 10 voting members are actually elected officials from, in one capacity or What you may or may not know at this point is the vast majority of this money that this foundation creates is going to be utilized for governmental purposes. A portion of the money is going to be utilized for grants in some form or fashion that we haven't been able to agree on yet. Part of that is due to the fact that we are so young. Last year, we did get as far as getting our independent investment advisor hired. We got our investment plan put together, adopted, and implemented. And then, kind of, here we are, and we're probably now about 16, 17 months in of having the money invested, okay? I don't think, as we sit here, I don't think one penny has been spent yet, okay? Some of those internal things are, we still need to work out here. But I think what's important for the voting members to understand is that we are, as we've been saying, kind of this weird hybrid, created by statute. We've got to kind of live with one foot in government and one foot in the not-for-profit. And we're going to inherently have some conflicts because of that, between those fairly large different standards. Some are going to be bigger, some are smaller. But ultimately, we need somebody with the experience that's going to be able to help us navigate those waters, whether it be with the State Board of Accounts, or the IRS, or whoever that may be. Because ultimately, I do think we are kind of setting, we're plowing new ground, for lack of a better analogy. So that was kind of one of the things the committee spent a lot of time talking on as far as how the committee kind of came down to paring down the people who responded to this. So I was happy to hear some of the comments you made earlier.
Sure. I mean, two of the governmental entities we work on, the Indiana Finance Authority, that was formed, you know, it's been a few, maybe 10 years ago now, kind of losing track of time. When it was formed, it was four or five quasi that consolidated to one. We worked through that with the State Board of Accounts. The Indiana State Museum's a client. It was kind of encumbered within the state. It broke out with separate financial reporting, and we worked through that with the State Board of Accounts. So we have, you know, we have a lot of history of working with the State Board of Accounts from the startup of these entities and dealing with these issues.
And they did say that you're currently the only one in the state, so that is.
They think you're the only.
And I can tell you, I know, and I don't know when your phone, when your phone call to the State Board of Accounts took place. I have, at least some of our experience has been, the answers are ever-changing because they are, within themselves, attempting to figure out how they want to deal with us and how they, what direction they're giving us on what to deal with. So, again, it's part of the growing pains of doing this and being the first one to do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure their responses are what we would have thought, so we will push back and give more.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, but we just got to, I just think we all have to understand, and I think the board is well aware of it, we kind of have this delicate issue that we're going to have to be dealing with moving forward.
And we work with the State Board of Accounts, both on the government side and the nonprofit side, because if a nonprofit is receiving some sort of governmental funds, they automatically fall under the State Board of Accounts. And so there's additional requirements we have to go through for those as well. So we, and there's issues where we have to contact them for that as well, to make sure that things are being reported correctly.
Commissioner Biggs, how do you structure your fees?
We do a budget, so it's kind of an hourly, it's a projection. Amanda put together a budget, and we've looked at it from there and then tried to be competitive after all that's said and done, so.
Amanda, do you have any idea annually what your fee would look like?
It's in the report. I didn't see that.
It's in red.
And can you also explain why it was $750 more this year than last, what the increase would be? Because that just seems.
This is what I have. And, you know, as you said, it's a new entity, and we know, too, we're going to have to work through some of these reporting challenges and make sure that we're covering everything in the fee quote that we gave, so that we don't have to come back and say, hey, no, maybe it needs to be more. So we're really trying to get it, like you said, a competitive fee that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's just an inflationary-type increase.
And I think also, I mean, the committee, in the subcommittee, I think it became, was quite a topic of conversation. I could tell you that I would not have envied any of the people who responded to our requests or proposals on this, because, given what we just went through as far as how unique and new we are, I'm not exactly sure what they were really able to kind of wrap their arms around and say, this is going to be the work, and therefore, this is what we are going to bid, or this is what we're going to quote. Because, again, we're kind of, you know, unfortunately, we're kind of in that position where that is difficult to ascertain how much, how little is going to be needed from them, simply because they're the first ones at the gate to do it. So I, you know, I think some of these things are going to be quite a bit more simple, but I also think there are going to be some subjects that are fairly complicated and in-depth that are going to have to be dealt with.
You guys have a lot of experience in the field. And so, in a projected scenario, can you anticipate where our fees would go? I mean, because we're going, our activity's going, we're going to see a lot more activity as we set up the board and as we decide how we're going to fund these entities. And so the review process is going to be much more complicated. So can you say that we're going to see a $40,000 cap on those fees, or 80,000? I mean, in your past history, where have those gone when you guys have started in these foundations?
Do you want to, do you? Yeah, I wouldn't expect it to move a lot from where it's at. I mean, that's, I know, making the grants is, you know, a key component to what you'll do, but that's probably, you know, for us, reading the grant agreements and reviewing them, that's probably not real-time consuming. We'll probably spend a significant amount of time setting it up the first year. It'll balance out over time.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about, is I know the initial setup is going to be complicated, so.
And speaking of, they actually say in here that $9,800 you guys are going to do for, to get it set up?
Yeah. And, you know, some of it depends on, Amanda mentioned doing some of it from the office, how we balance that out. And we're willing to be transparent about our time and rates, and most of this work we do discount.
I know at least one client in particular where it seems like we've gotten more and more efficient, and we have gone back and, when they, they've rebid it, but we've lowered the rates to be consistent with knowing we can be more efficient.
What would have to happen for additional fees to be preferred?
On top of what we proposed?
Yeah, yes.
I'm comfortable sticking by those. I mean, we kind of know what we're getting into. I mean, it's, you know, if you get into a mess, I don't see this as being a mess.
At least at this point, it's coming off in a.
Yeah.
No, we haven't started spending yet.
There's not enough, there's not enough activity for this to get to, you know.
Yeah, we had, we weren't really sure about, you know, are we going to prepare the trial balance from the investment statement? So things like that, we kind of incorporated into the fee, figuring that you would need some help with that as well. So we did kind of try to, like you're saying, guess how.
And it's been hit on by Scott and by yourself, when you reached out to State Board of Accounts from the get-go, where the unique entity of the state. So there's going to be some bumps here as we trailblaze through this uncharted territory. And you did mention that you would monitor the grant process, or be looking at the grant process. Is that before they're awarded, or?
So once you're providing grants, we want to make sure we understood the process as far as how they're going to be awarded. And if it's something that you're putting in place but you haven't done yet, we can go ahead and look at it then, because, you know, it's easier to do it then and.
Well, we haven't got that, so.
But, you know, like, it's easier for us to tell you upfront. We're not really like the gotcha CPA firm. We'd rather find an issue upfront and have it corrected before the audit comes along. But, yeah, we would, we would want to make sure that those are going to whoever the foundation board approved. That's normally the concern with grants.
And then the proposed term, is it a one-year renewable relationship?
Yeah, I mean, usually if we, yeah, it's, what's one year, whatever you want to, I mean, we're fine quoting out further, two, three.
I think the RFP asks for two years, so that's why we provided two years in the proposal.
Yeah, I think we should stick with two, especially a minimum of two on this person whoever gets chosen.
Sure. Okay, any additional questions for this group?
I do.
Vicki?
First, I just want to mention that, you mentioned that we don't have many transactions. I just would like to point out on our statement of activities, we had just three items under revenue. We had very little activity in 2016. So with that said, would you, could you sort of describe how much of your audit services would be not really auditing our financial statements, which are rather bare-bones, because we really just had one transaction and then the investment earnings? But how much of it would be really delving deep into the investment information that we've been provided by our third-party, by our, by Capital Cities? And then how much of it would be more advisory in scope, like the recommendations that you would be providing us as we begin this process, being the first from the state to do that?
Well, our process on actually auditing the investments, it's, we'll, we'll be looking at Capital Cities and if they have, I'm, I'm very likely they have a service auditor's report. And so if we get that and it's very clean, that helps us reduce some of our testing there, so we can rely a lot more on their statements. A lot of your assets are mutual funds, which I can go out on the internet and double-check that those numbers are right. If we can confirm the information, but that isn't enough to test valuation, we have to do a little bit more there. And then, that's it. We've been talking about the setup. You know, if we determine that you're a governmental entity instead of a not-for-profit entity, the reporting does get a little bit more complex. There's a little bit more, you know, you're probably familiar with like the management's discussion analysis that goes into that, so that becomes a little bit more work. And it, it's kind, we kind of want to see, it's kind of like he's saying, see what we end up getting into. I see you've got financial statements in front of you, so those are already somewhat prepared, so.
Right. We have the statement, I'm sorry, the statement of financial position, statement of activities, and of course, the statement of cash flow.
of activities, and of course, the statement of cash flow, which was actually the hardest to, for me to put together, for lack of activity. And then the disclosure notes, and that is about it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess on fees, I'd be glad to, you know, revisit it if, if we get to where, you know, we are able to do a lot of it from our office and, and that method, and take a look at it.
And we wanna make sure our quote's competitive, so if that's a significant concern, we wanna talk about it.
Any additional questions at this point? If not, thank you so much for the information and the time taken so far.
Okay, thank you.
Our plan is to step out during their presentation, but stick around.
Yeah, you're welcome to do whatever you like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, representing Kemper CPA Group, LLP, Kerry.
I'll wait a minute.
Hello, there. Okay, what we'd like to do is have you introduce yourselves, if you would.
Absolutely.
And go through your presentation, and if it's 15 to 20 minutes, that would be great.
Okay.
And then we'd open up the floor for any questions or comments that the board members may have.
Okay. So, my name is Kerry Hanny, and I'm a partner at Kemper. Willie McKinney was going to come with a week's notice. He just, he couldn't squeeze it in his schedule, and he's our regional partner. So I'll kind of get into our firm, how it's structured, and that will make a little more sense. So I am the partner in charge of the West Side office in Indianapolis, and Willie is actually on the East Side. We're split into regions, and he's the regional partner for five offices.
And my name is Matt Warner. I'm the audit staff at the Avon office.
So generally, when we present, this is our presenting document, it's just our presentation, and I wasn't really sure who all would be here today, and so, we do have some brochures available, but in this day and age, anything you'd ever want to know can be found on the internet. So, it kind of speaks volumes, too, about our firm's structure and really our audit approach, I would say. And I'm assuming you all have?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. I would say that probably what sets us apart, first of all, we all audit the same. We are all under the same standards, the same guidelines. We generally, most of the firms of substantial size use the same checklist. We use the same audit programs. I mean, we use the same software. So, you know, we could, and I will get into more detail about exactly what our firm does, but I would say that really what sets us apart from the normal audit environment is that we do try to be closely involved with client, understanding, probably going the extra mile. Everyone can say they do that. I think that the way our firm is structured lends itself to us doing that. First, thanks for having us up here. I love, I'm from San Jo County, so, love coming back this way, although I just got home late last night from South Haven, Michigan, so I was just up this way, so. So, you see from the presentation, the firm's been around since 1950, late 50s, and we've grown to 28 offices. So while in total number, we're around 400, that puts us, I believe, depending on which exact minute you're looking at it, we're in the top 100 in the country. I think we're about low 80s to high 80s. I think we fell off a little bit last year, just because some firms' revenue grew a lot. But we have 28 offices, 65-ish partners. I missed the first meeting, I do apologize that we were at a partner meeting, and then that evening I couldn't break away, my grandson was getting baptized. But, so, so the firm has grown in size, a lot by acquisitions, but also by staying a lot. I kind of attribute it similar to credit unions. So, we are not aspiring to be major in any major market. I mean, that's just not the way we've, we roll. We do have an office downtown Indianapolis, but we'll never have one like major, big office. We're very, very community-oriented, and we tend to be out in the communities around some of the bigger cities, and that's the way we'll continue. So our offices are Indiana, Northern Kentucky, Illinois, and we did a merger a few years back, and we have five offices in Northern California. So we're completely full-service, as you can see. We do audits and reviews, and all the assurance agreements, valuations. We have a strong technology division. We assist a lot with clients and their technology, and we have a payroll service. So, so we're full-service spectrum, but I think that the 28 offices versus being one centrally located really allows us to have a vast array of experience. Our offices are all connected, software-wise, so we're digits away from the Evansville office, or the Effingham office, or the California office for that matter. All of our computers are the same as well. So, our quality control is very, very deep, and that is something that I wouldn't trade for anything with the firm. We have specific units of quality control partners that are dedicated, depending on the industry we're in. So, a not-for-profit, I have probably five partners that I would go to, to review specifically, you know, do you have experience or knowing, and I know which ones have experience with foundations, or maybe a certain type of not-for-profit, labor union, whatever it may be. So, we're very committed to quality control and are stringent on that. But the benefit I feel with 28 offices is that we are spread out enough that we have some flexibility. If we need something that must be done immediately, and, you know, you're in need of something, or, and we're all out in the field, you know, I could call someone in the Greenfield office, I can call someone in the Evansville office or whatever, and they can jump on the same software and assist with the matter, or whatever's necessary. So that's probably, I think, a huge benefit, being that deep in that many offices across in that many industries. We have a large number of not-for-profit clients that we do, we've listed some. There are many, many more, especially in the state of Illinois, doing a lot of governmental audits. Foundations, we do many out of our office, out of our region, and I think we've all, personally, many of us at the partner level serve on some sort of foundation board as well. I know that I certainly have for many years. Your RFP looks very straightforward for what has gone on here. I would have a couple of questions, just about the timing of things and the expectations. I know kind of by your timeline, initially, you've fallen a little behind with doing a two-year, so I would have some questions, just what your expectations are. I think that they could very easily be somewhat tag teamed, so when we were out doing the first year, we could take a good look at the first three quarters of the second year, and then the second year would be easily wrapped up, just to get you back on track a little bit. You know, I think you have very minimal transactions with this foundation, so also very few spots that would require a lot of attention for controls. I think they'd be very well documented and very easy to follow. So I really don't think that there's anything, you know, you just have about a few things to check boxes on, on your end. We obviously would be documenting everything, but it's not like you have 1,000 transactions a year going on out of this, right? You just have a few, and then heavily on the investment end, and making sure you're taking that 5% where you say you are, and that's really about as far as that goes. So staffing-wise, it would be out of our region. I can tell you I would be the engagement partner, and Willie'd be the regional partner. Ron Halter, who's in the proposal, would definitely be the quality controller. He does many, many foundations. And Matt would probably be involved, Leslie Rowden, just probably depending on your timing as well, because I know you probably are close since June was the initial target date. I believe we had estimated fieldwork in August, so we're at the 15th or whatever today is 15th, so. So really, that's about all, other than our proposal that we have. Like I said, our audit approach is very standard. No one's recreating the wheel on audit approaches. It takes time to get through the planning pieces with you, and being a governmental audit, spend some additional attention to the internal control, but like I said, you're not doing that many transactions out of this. So I don't foresee any problem with that. So, have you thought of your timing? Are you, yesterday, yesterday to start the audit?
Yeah, we're, I'll let Scott speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think our concern, and it was difficult to articulate in the RFP, is that, and it's been pretty clear through some of the communications we've had with the State Board of Accounts and things like that, that the oddness of this foundation probably is that we are, are we governmental, or are we not-for-profit?
Right.
And those are not exactly the same, and they don't exactly have the same rules and the same things apply. I can tell you that I've gotten two different answers. But I think ultimately, and whoever we choose to do the auditing, is going to have to be able to work with us to try to navigate that minefield that exists out there. We're a, we're a creature of statute, but yet we're a non-for-profit. These 10 people that are voting up here are all elected officials from the county. The money that started this foundation was governmental money. The 5% earnings, the vast majority of those are gonna be spent back on governmental things. There's a small portion of that will be utilized for local non-for-profits, most likely.
Who will be making the decision on that?
On who gets those?
Mm-hmm.
This board.
Okay.
This board either through, this board has a couple of different options, kind of, that they're kicking around on how that would occur.
Okay.
But ultimately, this board is either going to decide to have themselves do it, have someone else do it for them. There's many, all those options are still out there, but this board needs to decide on the direction they're taking. So, I guess, my concern, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, is that if we were firmly governmental, obviously State Board of Accounts would be auditing us, but they're not. If we were firmly non-for, traditional private non-for-profit out there, then we have a clear set of rules we're following. We're gonna have a foot in each. Some of the statutory requirements or guidelines that the statute has in it from its investment protocols, or its guidelines, are probably in contradiction to the straight non-for-profit guidelines, and we're gonna have that kind of back and forth between what we are for a while, until that's sorted out. And we're going to need to have, you know, the assistance to deal with the State Board of Accounts on this end, maybe the IRS on that end, and somewhere in between is where we're at, because ultimately, as you know, and we're not that old.
Right.
But we're the only ones, so we're the ones breaking all the new ground, so to speak. So, kind of, I think there's lots of people watching to see how we do it, make sure, we'll see if they wanna do it, and see how it works. And there may even be future legislative tweaks to what, where we're at now, but nevertheless, we're the, we're the first guinea pigs doing it. So, I do think there's going to be the potential, at least, for some.
Conversation.
It's gonna be the potential for some difficult decisions to be made on some of those things, because we are gonna have one foot in each.
Sure.
And, and so I think that's out there. Ultimately, for the rest of the rendition, as far as, have we had many transactions? No, it'll be complicated at this point. No, we have one, we have one independent financial advisor, we have one custodial accounts. We probably made three transfers of cash in 2016. We probably made one or two in 2017, based upon.
Did you fund the fund at the end of 16?
We funded the fund, and we transferred the money in the beginning of 16.
Right.
And then we did our investment, our investment plan with Capital Cities, adopted that, and then transferred the bulk of the money shortly thereafter, and it's been invested. Probably, as we sit here now, we're probably looking at those 17 months or so, half-range, where we've had earnings. So, from the, where is the money and how to get there and what's been spent, that's all very, pretty, pretty simple and straightforward.
But navigating through the waters.
But navigating through the other issues is kind of what I'm concerned with, because we are, you know, we're new.
Sure.
We're kind of a hybrid.
Sure. I think, though, there's, it's navigatable, if that is a word.
If it's not.
You know, I think other, other clients I'm thinking of navigating through waters, not so much with the government and back and forth, but just some not-for-profits, and what are you, and are you quasi-governmental, and what are you really required to be filing? This feels very much like a not-for-profit. I mean, I think it's just gonna take a lot of sorting out. Your IPS looks very in line with many, many other investment policy statements for not-for-profits, maybe the bonds that are sitting outside of a little bit.
Yeah, but for instance, our, you know, can't speak for the board, but looking through the magic glass, we're taking, if it makes 5%, we're taking 5%.
Right.
And I'm sure that 5% number is probably outside the normal private, you know, the, your normal non-for-profit range of a guaranteed take, no matter what. I mean, there's just, there's, and I, and I, I'm not trying to make them that they're insurmountable, it's just, I wanna make sure.
It will have to come apart.
And we're gonna have to part those things together as we move forward.
And really, 5%, I mean, spending rates from 3.5% to 5.5%, so I don't think that's, but again, you'd need.
Right. We're gonna have, we're just gonna have, I just wanna bring the light that we have those issues to deal with.
And I would have to say that between our offices and our, especially in the state of Illinois, expertise in dealing with municipalities and things, I don't think it'd be anything that we haven't, any level of, you know, conflict that we haven't dealt with in some level before, or that we couldn't maneuver through.
Right.
Yeah, not at all.
But ultimately, I think the rest of it, you're right, we're, we're pretty simple. And I think ultimately, most likely, from the transactional side of this foundation, it's going to remain pretty simple moving forward.
Right.
I think there's going to be probably bulk transactions happening, moving money.
Right.
And then, once it's here, then it's going into a different track, as far as what here means, as far as, once it's getting into a gov, once it's into one of these funds, then we're going, that, it goes into a different, it goes into a different track.
Right. And that's really, I would say, probably what we'd need to really make sure we're navigating through.
Right.
Is where it's going out of here, too, because that's gonna probably be the question.
And I, and I think.
Right? And who's making the decision coming out of here?
Right.
And what type of entity should that look like, to cover all bases?
It's them.
It's them.
It's them.
And then subject to State Board of Accounts.
Right, so if, if all 10 of them are gonna have to decide how those things happen. But one thing, but they, not to belabor it, but I think we highlighted the point.
Sure. And I would think, oh, time is a bit of the essence, you know, you've been sitting now, you haven't had an audit last year, and that's in your bylaws, so you need to be moving in that direction, clearly, right?
My time is on the eyes.
Mm-hmm, a little bit, right. Have you had a lot of conversation back and forth regarding these issues? And I would think, oh, time is a bit of the essence. You know, we've been sitting now, we haven't had an audit last year, and that's in your bylaws. So you need to be moving in that direction clearly, right?
My time is on the agenda.
A little bit, right. Have you had a lot of conversation back and forth regarding these issues with the State Board of Accounts or?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, and the long and short of it is this, they don't know yet either. Because, because we're the only one.
And you may tell them and, you may tell them.
They may change.
Yes. Or they may say, okay, right?
Right.
So I don't think it'd be, you know, once decisions are made.
We're all going to keep the IRS happy.
Exactly.
So we got, that, that's the two hurdles.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for the Kemper group? Okay, well, thank you so much today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for the information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You guys are more than welcome to stay or leave, however, however you'd like.
We'll probably head back here if these, if anybody's.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, good evening, thank you. So what I'd like to do at this time is to open up the floor for discussion on the two presentations that have been made and the material, of course, that we've received and reviewed. Specifically, want to thank the subcommittee, which Vicky, Scott, Jeremy, and Matt served on. And did I miss anybody on that?
I didn't make it to the meeting.
Okay. So we appreciate sorting through the six different proposals and narrowing it down to two fine choices. And that certainly makes, makes things more, makes it helpful for us as a board to make an ultimate decision. But what I'd like to do is have a discussion about the material, about the presentations, and open up the floor for that discussion.
I'll start off, it's fine. We narrowed it down to these two and they were, they presented in the order that we ranked them. Katz being the first one. After the presentation, I still feel more comfortable with them. I think that their experience, they have much more experience. By them, just little things, even by them calling the State Board of Accounts, getting to engage, that understanding means a lot. They are, like Scott said, you know, I don't, for somebody to throw a number at this is probably pretty difficult. And you can see these two, there's a little bit of a difference between these two. But I would imagine that's probably negotiable at some point in time when they get in and realize what they don't have to do and what they do. And so I just personally still feel comfortable that the decision that we made out of that committee, to me, it still stands. I feel more comfortable with that by what I read, their presentation right here.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments?
I have to echo Jeremy's sentiments. I was so impressed with, well, we were in touch with State Board of Accounts, and what really are you? I mean, they understood, they understood that we are somewhere in between. And will we be identifiable or are we just going to be in that gray area? And they understood that. I think these are two outstanding companies, and I think, thank you, that served on the committee because we have to weed through a lot. And I appreciate everybody's time, but just from the small presentations that I listened to tonight, I would have to echo that I think Katz has already better understanding of what we are or we aren't.
I guess if I could build upon that a little bit too, and Matt, I'd really like to hear from you. Matt, you said, I think you're familiar with both of these firms. And he had mentioned that, I believe Katz has a presence at the State House. I remember that. They have an understanding of what's going on in this process. I think we all know, I would imagine, who knows? Our legislators always stick their fingers in things, so this is probably not the last time we'll hear from them on something like this. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you saw tonight was a reflection of that. There was an in-depth understanding on one part of Indiana law, how we came to be, and how choppy those waters are as we speak, and proactive outreach to the right people to get a deeper understanding of that versus, you know, another firm whose experience and reliance upon that venue was based more on Illinois experience, no connection really to what's going on in Indiana. There's a lot of locations around and that sort of thing. You know, everything that we're doing is about what is going on in Indiana. And Katz's main presence is in Indiana, they're the largest Indiana county firm, or I don't know why they've stated, but it was pretty clear to me that they were plugged into the kind of things that would be important to us as we hit a start.
And Matt, we do appreciate your input and the committee process. I know you were critical in that, and very much appreciate it.
I also, I also feel that Katz was a better fit. I just have a question. Is it worth talking them about their fees? And seeing, I mean, they seem interested in potentially negotiating is what I got from their last comment. So I'm just wondering, is it even worth trying to negotiate the fees and?
Yeah, my, my impression on that was that they were willing, they threw a number out there because we asked them to. And I think as a, especially for the 2016 and depending on what happens for 2017, you know, the 2016 review is incredibly simple. And so in terms of their willingness to review those fees to potentially come down, it seemed like they were very open to it. And I trust that, I trust that they would be willing to do that and be reasonable and fair. And I certainly got, that's the sense that I got for sure.
Is that something you do before you make a motion? Or what's the proper steps to do something like that if we wanted to negotiate prices? Jeremy had a good point, but they're probably not going to come to us and say, hey, we're not doing a lot of work, we're going to give you money back unless we ask for it, in my opinion, you know, a lot of companies.
Well, they said they would be open with, Jim, Commissioner Biggs, you know, asked that question of how they came to that, that number, and they said, basically off some rates, and they said they would be open, you know, to showing us, I mean, I guess at the end of their first work product, show us how you got, you know? Does that still match that clause?
What, one option we could do is just not do it as a flat fee type of arrangement, do it as a hourly arrangement, and we're going to go through two years and have a much better understanding of what happened, what they did, what they didn't do, and be in a position to move forward. I think that might, might be a way of handling this.
And to your point, Councilman Bozak, that could be as part of the motion to say that we would go with them on an hourly basis and would work with them figuring out what.
Or, 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 or we're, the board is willing to go in that direction and we need to, you know, you give Harold and I the opportunity to negotiate a little bit with them, and one of the options may be hourly.
I would rather go with that because it's such an unknown how many hours we're talking about here. And I actually got the feeling that even though these prices are so different, Katz has done a lot more research into what it's going to pay. They have a better clue. I mean, these are both estimates.
The plan.
I, I just had the feeling on the second one, even though they listed a dollar fee on there, that wasn't where it was going to be. There was going to be some additional effort put into that. And if they would realize that at the end of the audit, that they were grossly undercharged, they under, grossly undercharged us, and there would be some additional fees incurred. And I think the other firm had much better grasp of where we were going.
I think they're both very qualified. But what I, you know, was talked about this evening was, you know, we're filling our way around here. And that was, I think that was really talked about with both of the firms. And if you look on, in the Kemper proposal, schedule of fees and terms, I mean, they're very, they're very, seem to be very strict on when they want to be paid.
Right.
And, you know, what happens if they don't get paid? And where, where Katz, there was no mention of any, any of that in their proposal or during their presentation. And because we are crawling right now, and we have to one day walk, I think we're going to have to have consultants walk at the same pace with us until we get on our feet and really get the hang of all this. And I, and I got that, I got that feeling. And I'm not going to lie, I was impressed with, with both of them. And I like the idea that, that she's local, so if they screw up, she ain't got far to run.
Good point.
Well, I'll make a motion that we choose Katz with the understanding that both Council McClure and Council Harper will reach out and negotiate with them.
Yeah, contingent on, contingent on that they are, they are able to reach, you know, an agreeable structure, fee structure, price.
Sure. My motion will reflect that.
But I'll second that.
How third?
Motion on the floor that has a second and a third is to go with Katz, Sapper, and Miller with the information presented with the caveat of having Attorney Harper and Attorney McClure come to a reasonable, agreeable fee structure for these first two years as we walk through this process together.
Just, just one question I had with that. How are we going to verify that we aren't charged the initial startup cost of the $9,800? How does that, how do you guys verify that? Is that something you guys can do? They said they're eating the $9,800.
Probably would just have to get an invoice, right?
So we don't get the first invoice? Is that?
They said they were eating it, so.
Well, like, that's what I'm trying to figure out. How do we know that we weren't built for it? That's not part of the bill.
Well, because the second year was all within the same price range, so they wouldn't have charged us that whole year. It would be a review of the invoices, and to some extent, we're going to, obviously, we take Katz on, this vote is we're taking this, this, this accounting firm, this Katz firm on as partner, and we're going to have to have some level of trust with them. And I think we also have to put to some context here that we're, we are managing $150 million, and so far, it's costing us $65,000 a year to do so. So we're talking about $10,000 or $20,000 on the audit that's required by the state. I would say that we have done about as good as you could possibly do of keeping our costs down. So while I am aware and willing to deal with all those things, I'm just saying ultimately, this is good, just like Capital Cities has turned into a partner with us, that we, there's some level of trust and verification happening. If this ends up, if we end up doing a contract with Katz, we're going to have to have that same kind of relationship and understanding with them moving forward. And I'm sure they're not going to have any problem with transparency in their, in their billing invoices as, not to beat a dead horse, but whether we're governmental or non-for-profit, anybody can see them. So, I mean, those are going to be out there.
So typically, firms of that size and type, they're, they're not around long. If they, if they're, they're, they're sending bells out they shouldn't be sending.
And if you look at the clientele that they represent, it's quite extensive.
Want to make sure, they're teasing down our eyes.
No, it's a good, good question.
The dollars.
Good question, Andy, I just, you know.
Plus, Vicky just volunteered that the auditor's office would audit the billing of our audit.
Audit the auditor.
Is that what she does?
That's, that's.
That's part of the function, yes.
That's, that's one of the things she does, so.
Thank you. The government's watching me, who's watching the government?
We all need to be watching you. Any, any additional comments regarding the motion? Matt will have a roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Whitten, is that sent? Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak?
Yes.
Councilmember Revis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Commissioner Good, is that sent? Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Very good. We have a.
Eight in affirmative.
We have an independent auditor. That's, that's a big break. Okay, moving on. Where are you going? I guess nowhere.
I don't know.
Moving on. It's all instruction.
Thank you.
Where are you going? Nowhere. Just want to tell them.
More presentation.
Presentation.
At this time, I'd like to bring, bring to the front Bill Higbee, who is the President and CEO of the Porter County Community Foundation. The board members will recall at the last foundation meeting, we had several different discussions about the nonprofit charitable component of our foundation process. At that time, we talked about different options in terms of how we may want to proceed with the grant process. And there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of questions out there about that. The, the different options that we had at that time, which are still the options today, and there may be additional options or hybrids of these options to consider going forward. But to remind everybody of where we stand in terms of how do we want to handle the nonprofit charitable component of the foundation, we can handle it as we have been currently, which without question has been, hasn't been a real effective program or procedure in that we haven't established any guidelines, haven't given any type of money away for any organizations, haven't done any of the groundwork for it. That, that particular process is how it's set up at this point. I think everyone, or most everyone, would agree that we need to do something a little bit different. Consideration came up too about the prospect of taking whatever that dollar amount is that we decide from the interest earnings and deciding what, what dollar amount, what percentage of that money we would give to the nonprofits or the charitable organizations through some sort of application of grant process. And we talked about determining that dollar amount and then potentially dividing that amount by 10 and saying that the 10 voting foundation members would have the responsibility of deciding where that, where that money is going to be donated or contributing. And that's all predicated on the realization that there would be parameters in place and guidelines in place established by the foundation, and the individual foundation members would make that determination as to which organization would benefit. The, another option that came up and was discussed specifically at the last foundation meeting, we talked about determining what that dollar amount is on an annual basis and then, and then working with, in a collaborative way, working with an organization such as the Porter County Community Foundation and have them help and guide us or assist us in the administration of this grant process. And, and have them, have them walk us through it and kind of handle the, the technical administrative part of the work. So as a result of that discussion, an idea came up and a motion was presented to have Bill Higbee come give a presentation. And this is a informational, educational sort of discussion where I've met with Bill and asked him to come in and give us a description as to what the Porter County Community Foundation currently does as they sort through the plethora of requests and all the different organizations out there that are seeking assistance. And I wanted him to explain a little bit about what they go through in, in their organization to determine who gets what on an annual or semi-annual basis. And that could potentially lead us down a path to say, is this something that we want to do on our own? Is this something we want to do in partnership with an organization such as, such as the Porter County Community Foundation, or how we want to proceed? And so this is, there's not going to be any action taken tonight. We're not going to vote on anything tonight relative to that component of the foundation's interest. But it's more to stimulate some additional discussion, perhaps come up with some additional ideas, and that's how we'll, that's how we'll set the stage for Bill Higbee. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Bill, and then we'll have, I'm sure, some questions at the end of your presentation. And we sure appreciate you taking the time, your schedule, to truly help guide us and explain to us what you do, knowing that, knowing this is your, your time, and we appreciate your willingness to help guide us in the process, being the, being the expert in the field. So.
I don't know that expert is the right word to use, but I am honored to be with you. I would extend, first of all, congratulations to you on selecting an auditor. I know that's a big step, takes a lot of time, and you have that off your plate. And also, I would extend my appreciation for the thoughtfulness with which you are approaching the grant-making program that you hope to develop. I think it's worth spending time to develop some structure so that the community ultimately benefits from, from the money that is available from this. benefits from the money that is available from this foundation. By its very nature, a community foundation is charged with building and managing and enduring source of charitable dollars that will be here for Porter County, not just for today, but for tomorrow and every tomorrow that follows. And part of that process involves a competitive grant program, which we have. So, what I'd like to do is sort of give you an overview from our perspective, how it works for us, and let you ask questions about that process and use this maybe as one of the steps in determining how best to develop your grant program. So, the first thing that you need to do and understand is that you have to have some guidelines, or at least I would strongly recommend that you have some guidelines on how you're going to distribute this amount of money. You have to decide the kinds of things that you will fund and the kinds of things that you won't fund. Is it going to be a very broad program where any nonprofit that serves any segment of Porter County is available to apply for money, for funding? Or are you gonna limit it to certain areas, whether it's health and human services or community wellness or animals, the arts, education, youth? All those need to be taken into consideration when you're developing your guidelines for funding. You have to decide if an organization has to be based in Porter County or can it be an organization that serves Porter County but has its home base outside of Porter County? There have to be some parameters developed on the amounts that organizations are allowed to apply for. Are you gonna set, and those amounts may be different depending on the type of organization applying. There has to be some deadline for submission of requests. You can't just say, "Apply whenever and we'll decide if we're gonna give you money," or maybe you could, but from our perspective, it works better to have a set time period to collect applications. You have to decide how often will you run a competitive grant process? Will you do it once a year, twice a year, three times a year? Ours is run twice a year. And you have to set a guideline in terms of how often an organization can apply. Can they apply every time there's a cycle? Can they apply once a year or every other year or every three years? And you have to be able to maintain a contact list of all the nonprofits in Porter County so that you can communicate with them when the guidelines are available, when the application process opens, so that they know that this opportunity exists. And then, there's the whole issue of whether you choose to do this application process electronically or strictly on paper, and each of those has its own challenges. We recently went to an electronic process, which turns out, ends up being kind of a hybrid process, so nonprofit groups can apply online through our website, but then the committee that evaluates our applicants, they like to have papers, so we print out the applications and they review them on paper. So, it doesn't, a purely online process hasn't worked well for us, that doesn't mean it can't work well. If you do decide to have a paper process, there has to be a collection point, so when a group fills out an application and they're ready to turn it in on the deadline, and it's always on the deadline, they have to be able to know where, who will collect that, where they take it, who's gonna manage that collection process. And then, there's the evaluation. There are two ways to go with an evaluation of grant applications. There can be a formal sort of rubric, which allows the evaluation committee to score each applicant, and then you tally up the scores and that's how you make the awards, or we'll use a more subjective process, more of a conversational, gather around the table and talk about these applicants, talk about these programs, talk about the requests and see how to fund. So, those are decisions that have to be made. And then, you have to be able to notify those you choose to fund and those who don't get funded, whether that's a letter, a phone call, an email, there has to be a process for that. Those who are awarded funds, generally, there's some kind of agreement that goes along with that, so it might say, "We are pleased to award you $10,000 for this particular project. You have one year to use the money, you have one year to accomplish what you told us you're going to do, or we get the money back." So, those kinds of things, you might wanna be able, you might wanna work into the process. And then, if you expect to be recognized for the contribution, that has to be spelled out too. "We're gonna give you $10,000 and we would like to be recognized in this particular way." And then, somebody has to retain the records, so that has to be thought about as well. Would that be a function of some office in the county? Will there be an additional place to store grant records? There's more to it. If you choose to do it in a structured competitive process, it can be rather time-consuming. I can tell you that it is a huge part of what our staff does, it takes a lot of time, and we have one person who is primarily in charge of the grant, competitive grant process, but it involves several others along the way. The electronic process involves many, many phone calls during that time period when the application process is open. Nonprofit, maybe they can't log in, they need help, they have to have somebody to call to either walk them through it or reset their password. Same thing with our committee members, they have an opportunity to review the applications online, but then when they come together, they want them on paper. So, if one of our committee members can't access through their credentials, if they can't access the applications, it's a phone call, it's us trying to work through how, why can't they do it, and what do we do to get them in so they can review them. You have to invest in an electronic grant program, software, to run the program, so there's a financial investment in that, and then there's a yearly maintenance fee, and there has to be somebody that understands that program so that they can work with the software company when there's a glitch, and there will be a glitch. So, there's a lot involved in becoming a grant maker. And the community foundation, obviously, it's what we do, it's a big part of what we do, so we are happy to help in any way that benefits what you're trying to do in injecting some resources into the nonprofit community in Porter County, whatever we can do to continue the conversation so that you get what you want in terms of your foundation board and the community ultimately gets how, what will benefit them. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Higbee?
Obviously, there'd be a cost associated there. I mean, there's a lot of work, as you just explained, administrative-wise, to, you know, to make something happen like this. So, I think we all need to understand that. They wouldn't be doing this out of the kindness of their heart, nor would I.
Well, you might be.
No.
Yeah.
But if we were to turn that process over to you, how long do you perceive that it would take your organization to set up a program specifically for us?
The first step would be to work with all of you to establish some guidelines that would govern this particular amount of money. I'm assuming that the best way to handle it would be to keep it separate from our normal community fund process, so we would be adding an additional funding grant process. I don't know, how long's it take you to agree on guidelines?
It's all, I think we can say it's been at least eight months. And I don't know, yeah, I think, Jim, you may wanna give him a ballpark idea for your question that might help him to know, are you talking about 50 grand, are you talking about 10 grand, are you talking about $500,000?
Well, I think we're all, you know, I would leave that up to now, I don't wanna insult him, he knows that backwards or forwards better than I do, and I have confidence in the other nine members of this board that if a figure was thrown to us, whether or not we would recognize it as being fair, but there's one thing.
I think what's gotten at was the amount of money that we're going to push out.
Oh.
Yes, because that drastically changes what they're doing.
Yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're, well, we'll have to talk about that. I really don't even have a figure in my head. But I do know this, that if we already do this by ourselves, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to hire a person or two. Literally, no, I mean, if we didn't, if we didn't contract with them, we'd have to hire personnel to come in.
On a full-time basis.
To take phone calls, to help people through the application process, to record the information, you know, as he said, that information has to be kept, I mean.
Can I ask, how many different grants do you have? I know that you have, you know, your nonprofits, they all apply, but it doesn't matter what they're applying for, you don't have certain criteria or?
We do, we do have some printed guidelines, and the, generally speaking, we don't fund normal requests for operating money, so if a nonprofit sends a request because they need to balance their budget and they need some money to do that, we don't fund those types of requests. We fund requests for things that are outside their normal operating atmosphere. So, if somebody needs new appliances for their facility or YMCA needs a new gym floor, those kinds of things that aren't daily operational, then we welcome those kinds.
One of the things the foundation has funded for the government is Memorial Opera House did Theater for a New Audience, and a special night before the run started, they, the foundation funded bringing in families that couldn't otherwise see a theater.
Right.
And that was wildly successful and outside of bounds and something new for us.
We like to do new things, help organizations do new things that maybe serve a segment of the community that don't normally get to take advantage of certain.
Can you give us any kind of a ballpark figure of what, I mean, you have a huge organization and you're not gonna do this out of the kindness of your heart, I mean, what?
Let me ask you maybe a slightly different way, because I don't think we've given you enough information for you to be able to probably answer that very easily. So, how much, I think this is probably public record is, how much money in the last year has the foundation actually granted out?
From our competitive grant process, from the community fund, we granted out last year about $250,000.
Okay, and that $250,000 probably, roughly, is encompassing how much of your organization's time, person, two people?
Well, depending on the time of the year, it varies. There are times where we have one person doing nothing but grant work for several days at a time, and then maybe it eases up for a time, and I don't know exactly how to answer that, so.
Not to get.
How about if, because that's what everyone wants to know very badly, and I know, I know it's almost impossible for you to answer, but if we were to tell you at some point we were gonna give away, we thought, $100,000 or $50,000, whatever the number was that came up with, would you then be able to give us an idea of what it would cost to administer that?
Well, here's the challenge. Giving away $50,000 takes us almost the same amount of work as giving away $500,000.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So, based on an amount that you wanna give away, I don't think we can come up with an amount. And I'm not, I'm not prepared to quote an amount to you, I don't even know if our board of directors wants to go down this road, so.
Yeah, that, just to be clear, that wasn't the intent of tonight's discussion.
Just asking.
It was really just to educate us.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think the information has been extremely valuable, because like I said, I mean, what's clear is, the only way, we either had to do something like this or we're gonna have to hire a person or two to do it.
I don't think a person or two, I think he just said during the high time he's got one person focusing on it. I mean, we do have staff, both of us do have staff, and I don't know, I mean, yes, thank you for coming, absolutely, and, I mean, that's good information, but from year to year, I would say right now, I mean, do we know what we're gonna give away from year to year? It's only a few, right now, we give, I mean, to me, it'd be hard, I mean, find somebody to help us set it up and, you know.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
We don't know where we're going with this, so.
Jim, I mean, we have staff, but our staff is not trained in this area.
And I, and I think of Joy and I think of, you know, your staff, and I don't see the big answer.
Yeah, it's a tough one, but Tony, they shouldn't be.
But you have given us a tremendous outline of how you go through your process.
Well, let me look at this another way. You guys have had other organizations come into your operation and staff people in that facility, right? I mean, there are people that use that building besides just your people.
There are, there's one other nonprofit who is being housed in our facility temporarily. We don't, we don't maintain any supervisory or administrative authority over them.
But my thought was, is if we had to produce our own staff, we wouldn't wanna house them in a government center because we're not a government non-for-profit, so it would be something off-site, it wouldn't be the responsibility of our staff or anyone else, because then we really are grinning the lines between a government entity and a private foundation or a nonprofit foundation, and that's where you're kinda helpful. And along those same lines, I had a question on follow-up, because we're just picking your brain. When you administer a grant, and I, and this is probably, we've done some through the school corporation and stuff, so I've been on many advisory boards, but do you guys have someone that follows up on each particular grant? Is there one person that stays with, one of your board members that maybe oversees that usage of the grant and how the funds were expended, or do they, you just rely on that organization once you hand the money over into Don Deal?
We require the submission of a grant report after they're finished with the project they told us they were going to do with the money, and it basically says they did what they said they would do, and we keep that in their file. We do not invest a lot of time in following up personally, we pretty much know what's going on, so if there's a major issue, it'll be addressed, but we rely on that written report that they send back.
I was just thinking the value of having a full-time employee versus, you know, you're already giving us quite a huge list on what obligations we'd have to fulfill, and I'm looking at, if there's some stuff on the end, responding back to the people once there'd be an additional workload even after the grant had been fully used.
It is possible. I do know of community foundations that have a pretty aggressive follow-up process.
Yeah, the other question is, is that, you know, we were to create a position like that, is the question, who's supervising?
Right. That's exactly, the board would have to, we'd be responsible.
The president of the foundation would be responsible for the supervision at that point.
Put your hat on.
Mr. Westman, do you have a comment or question?
This is a great conversation, it's a complicated issue, obviously, but the more I listen and Bill, I mean, that's a great description. I'm in, I administer a grant process at the bank I work for, it's a foundation, I'm in the process I administer, I know how complicated it can be, but it seems to me that what we're all looking for here is some scope about what really is involved and how can we manage it effectively, and I think that it's gonna be premature to try to determine that until some other significant decisions are made, starting with, how much in total are we talking about, and then some of the key decisions are, and then how many potential grants? I mean, if we're gonna give away a million dollars a year and we're gonna make three grants, that's pretty easy. If we're gonna make 3,000 grants, I mean, so some of the things Bill kinda layered out about decisions, I think it's important to start chipping away at those in order to build the scope of what we need. It could easily be a one-person job if it's a fairly straightforward process that is simple and easy, or it could be a five-person job if you allow a lot of input and solicit multiple times a year, it's really, it's on a, I think there, I think that's, at least from my position from an advisory perspective, I think those are some things that we need to at least maybe rough out first to build some scope around how much is here to manage.
All right, I think, I think the logical, the step is to, not this medium, is determine if this is the route we wanna go.
Well, meanwhile, you need to speak to your. Well, meanwhile, you need to speak to your board.
Right.
And tell them I'm here.
And, and what route is that? I mean, could something be set up through, I'm just throwing out ideas, community foundation, Porter County's going to be having a grant process, and you throw it out there, you receive the applications, we score them, or you score them, or whatever, but we ultimately make the decision here. Or are we talking about hiring somebody within county government to gather all of this? And then we score it, and we did, I mean, in what capacity? And Bill said he hasn't talked to his board, he's just here to share information. And I have a question, in your grant process, do you have like a ceiling limit of what you will help any organization with? And what is that?
Right now, for anything that's not a capital campaign request, the limit is $10,000 per request. Our capital campaign limit is $25,000. We're looking at raising that, but currently it's $25,000.
You had mentioned, Bill, that you had a separate review board. That's not part of your operational board, is that correct?
That's correct. The committee we use to evaluate applications for grant money is a combination of our board members and community members from throughout Porter County.
I, I would like to hear back from, from Bill and his organization as to whether or not they're even interested.
Absolutely.
And I think that once we get that information back, then we, then we make a decision.
And I don't know if any of the rest of you have been on, I mean, I'm on a couple of scholarship committees with Tri-CAPA at the end of the school years, and it's very time-consuming, going through all the applications and doing it right, which is fine, but we need to be, have our eyes wide open going into that.
And I think, yeah.
It's not simple.
Right, and I think that what Laura said, the words she says, if it's done right, that's key. If it's done fairly and, and right, and the right way, it is gonna be very time-consuming.
Well, and also too, I mean, it's investigating, for lack of a better word, in an organization. Don't we want to make sure that there are 501(c)(3)? Don't we want to make sure that they're in good standing with the IRS?
Yes.
It's going through those steps that.
There's much more to this than meets the eye. Yeah, I think that's very, very clear, and I, it's been great discussion, Bill. Thanks so much for the, helping stimulate the conversation. We obviously have a lot to talk about and kinda decide among ourselves in terms of what direction we ultimately, ultimately want to go. But it's clear to me that there's a lot more to it than I think most people who aren't familiar with the industry, such as you, there's a lot more to it than most people think. And especially if you're gonna do it right, and especially if you're going to have a process in place that is really a year-long process. You need administrative help and you need, you need plenty of things in place, so. There's a lot of work to be done before we start granting, granting requests, that's for sure. Does the board think it's appropriate to, to ask Bill to go back to his board and, and seek more information to bring it back to at least the chairman, and the chairman share it with us at a next meeting?
Well, I'm not sure what, what it is we're asking, Bill.
I think it will be premature for him to go to his board and ask if they're.
What are, what are we asking Bill to do?
Well, in essence, what we're gonna ask him to do, ask the organization to do, is to administer.
Right, minimum, distribute, distribute. That would probably be a minimum.
But, I mean, our job is, this is a government, by the way, this is, that's why we're meeting in the government. This is, this is a foundation that's run by the government. We're all elected officials, we sit on it by statute, that's why we're meeting in here. So administering it in another place, we can administer it right here. It's, it's our responsibility, in my, my opinion, to do this. It's our, we all get paid already. I'm not shying away from responsibilities, spend a little more time doing my job that I was elected to do. And to me also, it's complicated, because how do we know from year to year what we're capable of giving out, of granting?
I don't think we're gonna know that till that. It's for the, that order, for, for the following, in the quarter, for that previous year.
It's gonna be difficult, and I, I think, as, this budget session will be interesting with where we're at and how that the foundation, we haven't even moved any money over, we don't know how that process is gonna happen.
We haven't even created a fund for that yet.
We've got a proposal about bonding out of that for a couple million dollars. Will we even have a penny left over there? What happens when the market, you know, gets into its down cycle? I mean, there's a lot of questions, I, I mean, do we move forward in this?
Well, I, you know, to make this clear, speaking for myself, you know, if, if, if we were to consider going into an agreement with the Porter County Community Foundation, I don't see that at, at all skirting my responsibilities as elected official. As a matter of fact, I can make a very strong case that it's just quite, it's quite the opposite. And that is, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we want to keep politics in. And we want to do it in such a way that we, you know, it's, we're, the stakes aren't made and we're not spending undue amounts of the, of the foundation's money, our, this foundation's money in, in trying to implement this program. And I think that trying to reinvent the wheel up here, that may just happen. So, I mean, that's, that's the way I feel about it.
Well, and I, I just wanna say, I, I see, I, I see that possibly we could have a partnership. If you could, you know, we've decided, okay, we're going to give out X, and if you could throw it out there, and you're taking the applications in, and, and something, I mean, there's some kind of a partnership I, I feel we need to form with you.
I, I think in all fairness to Bill, I think to take that information back, back to your board and talk about the potential or the possibility of doing some sort of partnership with the, with our foundation, where to find out how receptive they would be, if they're at all interested in doing it. It seems as if, and we'll have to sort through this as a foundation board ourselves, I mean, it seems as if we're going to, the consensus, I think, seems as if we're gonna need some administrative help. I mean, we're not prepared to do it, we don't have the people to do it, we don't have the expertise to do it, we don't have the software to do it, we don't have the follow-up to do it. And, you know, there can be a potential hybrid between the Porter County Community Foundation just tackling the funds and distributing it. The involvement from the foundation members could be, we could be that 10-person board who, after the applications are received and the grant requests are received, through your help, you walk us through that process, and we could be the 10-person board, making the determination as to who ultimately gets.
Absolutely.
Gets the grant.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And so I think for you, and I don't know if you need any additional information from us, Bill, in terms of what you might need to ask your board, but I think we need to find out first and foremost whether or not they're receptive to that idea, and if they are, then what that might potentially look like. And then we as a board, as soon as we can, need to make a determination as to what we're most, most comfortable with going forward in terms of the nonprofit charitable component of our foundation, our organization. Do you need anything else from us, Bill? Because I, I appreciate the informational approach that you took to it, because really, we obviously have a lot to learn.
Very helpful.
And our goal was not to put you on the spot or to pin you down on a price or anything like that. That wasn't, that wasn't at all what we wanted to do, but I think it certainly helped stimulate the conversation. For that, we're very appreciative.
Yeah, it opened my eyes, I did not consider, all that was behind us.
I mean, I didn't think it would be suitable, but I did not think it would be, yes, to imply it's done right.
I don't think there's anything else I need.
Okay.
It's incumbent upon me to discuss it with our leadership and see, I can be in touch with you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
No doubt, they'll have questions that I'll want to, to run past you.
And we'll continue to compile our questions and thoughts as well, and make sure we get them to you so you can continue answering them.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that was very informative and great, great discussion, and as thought out as a, as a board, we will have to ultimately wrestle with how we want to proceed. But it's clear that up until now, we haven't been in any, even close to being in a position to start awarding grants, which I think, I think, I think it's a good thing that we have it, frankly. So to, kinda to that, to that point, one thing that we, as we look at the foundation and the progress that, that we're making, and, you know, again, step one, get the auditor, engage with an auditor, that's, that's been, that's been a victory. As we talk about how we want to handle the nonprofit and charitable, charitable contributions component of the foundation, that obviously is something that's very important, a lot of people are interested in it. And so that's something that we have to address sooner rather than later. And we obviously want to be deliberate in it and make sure we do it right and set the stage for, you know, ongoing success. There's, there are other things that we need to do as a foundation to put ourselves in a position to be effective. And a lot of that has to do with some resolutions that need to be sorted out and presented to this board for, for, for voting. And Scott, if you could speak to some of the things that kind of are on our immediate plate that we need to address to continue moving the foundation forward?
Yeah, the foundation just as a whole needs to come to grips with probably some resolutions, some potential changes to the bylaws, and just, you know, write the rules that we're all going to live by and this board's going to agree on living by as far as when the money comes out of the foundation, where's it going? Once it's there, and it's here, what, what, how are we moving that around? What are we spending that on? Who's voting on it to spend it? How are we going to deal with the fact that, as we all sit here, we all know the council needs several millions of dollars out of the gate at the beginning of their budget succession? It's one of the reasons why the foundation wasn't put together. How are we gonna do that? What are we gonna do with the money that remains? Just the back-of-the-house coordination of how to move the money, who's voting on the money, what that vote looks like. One of the ideas from the previous committee that was kicked around was that we all have an idea of what that amount of money is the council needs at the beginning of their budget, at their budget session. So assuming we were back at the beginning of this year, you know, maybe when we finally get that report in the first quarter, you know, you set, you do a resolution. This body does a resolution that immediately moves those additional funds that are needed over to the general fund to make those things work. Are we gonna do it that way? Are we gonna have this foundation have a budget and have money paid out of this, out of this as a budget? I mean, it's those back-of-the-house issues of the, the nitty-gritty, so to speak, of the rules of how we're all gonna play, and how we're gonna move the money around, and how we're going to vote on it. And those things need to be done, and at this point in time, there isn't a fund. We've done first reading on a fund, we haven't done second reading, because frankly, this hasn't been, this discussion hasn't gone all the way to the end with a plan of action that's been adopted by the foundation. Those are the type of things that need to happen. We need to talk about what, we, there was talk at the first committee of a foundation rainy day fund. How much is that? What makes everybody feel comfortable? Is it one, two, three, four times our average earnings? What is that? Where would we get that from? How do we build that up? How do we protect it? Where is it sitting? Is it sitting here in a fund? Is it sitting at the foundation? I mean, where, you know, there's these, all of these relatively small questions, but as they all add up, start to build the picture of how we're all going to interact. And at this point, we just haven't been able to move off of those questions. I think now, I think it's come to its natural place where we have to. Budget session's gotta be around the corner. I know we've been working on budgets and submitting budgets and giving those to Vicki in the auditor's office, and she's been putting them in. So, you know, we have issues to deal with. And we know that a portion, a significant portion of those earnings needs to be moved over for operational costs. We do have a $30 million bond request that's going to take a significant chunk of what may be there, et cetera. So these are the times, you know, this is the time, and we need to be able to come to an agreement on how everyone is going to coexist as it relates to spending that money and how we're gonna do it. Ultimately, what I think we do is we either do resolutions or we amend the bylaws. And I don't think one is better than the other, or one's worse than the other. At the end of the day, the six people are gonna be able to change, whether it's a bylaw change or whether it's a resolution change, so it doesn't mean much difference to me. But at the end of the day, whatever that direction is, neither needs to be a resolution or a bylaw then. So that we all know what the rules are. This is what we do, this is who votes, this is, you know, what comes here, you know, there's basic questions. Is this foundation gonna have a budget? And if you ask yourself that question, well, why do we need a budget? Well, who's paying capital cities? Who's gonna pay tax? Are we going to take money from the foundation and flow it back to, you know, back to the county and have the county pay? Or are we gonna have the foundation directly pay? And that question gets more important, because, you know, are we going to assume for a moment this board retains the job of, of handing out the grants? Where is the grant money coming from? Is it coming from the foundation? Is it coming from the government? You know, it kinda goes back to that blurry line that we have. And so these are all those baseline questions that frankly, I think, and I also think everyone has to come to grips with the fact that nobody has the magic answer, okay? And I honestly believe the legislation was written in a way that the 10 of you decide, how are we doing this? And I think with, if we get too far astray, State Board of Accounts or somebody may get us, you know, bumper car us over a little bit, but at the end of the day, you know, can we have a budget? Yes, because no one says we can't. Do we have to have a budget? No, because no one says we have to. You know, it's, these are the type of things we need to get into a room and be able to kinda get on paper, get the money moved over. I think we probably have, I don't know, over, is it $6.9 million waiting, waiting to come over from the 2016 earnings? You know, the fact that we haven't spent any of that $6.9 to date also puts us in a position where we also have to make a mental decision. Are we gonna rely on, are we gonna rely on last year's earnings for this year's budget so we're always know what our earnings were before we go into budget time? I mean, that was, you know, that's a unique situation that we've kinda created by not being able to, you know, get all of these things agreed upon. But, you know, that's a unique situation where we can, from now on, say, we know how much money we made, and now we go into budget time and we know what we made, and you're always a year behind. I mean, there's, there's options, there's options to do that. Now, obviously, that, there's, I could also make an argument that let's not do that, because let's put $6.9 million or some large portion of that into the rainy day fund to start building that up, and let's go off of, you know, stay with earnings for this year, or, you know, for that budget, even though you guys are gonna, the council's always gonna be in a position then to be budgeting against something that they're not sure is going to be there. But then again, that's why you have the rainy day fund there at somewhere two or three or four times what we think we're earning, so that the council can always sit at budget time and know that if worse comes to worse and we've made zero in the foundation, and we have the funds to cover the obligations that we, that we've made out of those foundation earnings. But, you know, at the end of the day, these are all the things that the 10 of you have to figure out what you want to do with it and how you want to get there. But that's, you know, none of it's fun, you know, none of it's exciting, but at the end of the day, with, those are the, kinda the rules that we, the playbook needs to be written of how we're all gonna progress.
Well, I think it should be clear to all of us by now. I mean, there's, first of all, there's been very little, almost no activity over the last eight months. Whatever we're going to do, we need to start getting to it. Because I, I think that, I think that there's, there's, I, you know, there's, people on the outside of county government are starting, are starting to ask, you know, what, what are you going to do? And how are, how are you going to do it? So I, you know, I, as Scott pointed out, I mean, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done here before we can even, whether or not we can rely on any portion of it, or whether, or determine what amount of it are we going to put back and. or whether, or determine what amount of it are we going to put back into, to the community as a reinvest in the quality of life. So, we got to meet, we have to meet more than once every two or three months, that's for sure.
Sounds like we have to meet every month.
Huh?
It sounds like we need to schedule meetings.
Well, to, to that end, what I, what I would like to do is, is an idea that was presented previously, is I think, I want to appoint a committee who will work through and sort through some of these issues that Scott is talking about, because there is a lot of work to be done. And, and it's work that needs to be done, I think, outside of a ten-person board, because it's too difficult to get things accomplished from the ground floor with a ten-person board.
I don't disagree.
With a committee who can sort through these issues, come up with ideas and suggestions, and then hopefully come prepared to the, the entire board to put, put resolutions up for a vote, to come up with ideas that should be decided upon and discussed. That's really, I think, the only way we're going to get some of these things ticked off, ticked off the list that Scott's, that Scott's talking about. So, I would like to, and without a doubt, in this, in the committee format, it will be a completely transparent committee process where the meeting, meeting date and time and place of the meeting will be posted for the public and whoever else wants to attend can attend. But we need to make sure that, that we move forward, and my hope would be that as a committee, we could put together some information and some proposals that we could even address at our, at our upcoming September meeting and to start getting this work done. So I'd like to open that up for people who would be interested in serving on, on this committee, and it'd be from the council and, I don't know, from the commissioner's perspective, if you would be prepared to talk about that tonight or would prefer to defer and come back later?
No, no, I think we can, I think as, memory serves you correctly, I think that Commissioner Good had showed, had expressed some interest in, in setting on a, a committee such as that. I just leaned over and asked Laura if she was interested, she's certainly going to make herself available. I, I, I could as well, depending on, you know, when you're going to meet. But I would like to suggest, you, you said a committee. What's your thoughts about maybe a couple of committees? And those committees are given two or three different tasks to come back to the full ten-member board and to share that information.
I would say there's plenty of work to be done and spread around, and I would suggest that maybe at this first committee of the whole, they can talk about just that and divvy up some of the work.
Right.
So I have down on my list Commissioner Good and Commissioner Blaney to specifically participate.
That's fine.
And then, and I'd like to hear from the council members who would like to actively participate.
Scott, is that a problem? No, because you're not acting as commissioners, you're acting as foundation members.
All right.
And you're probably more available in the evening, right? So depending on when your, when the meetings are, we can alternate.
And I'd also suggest, as we had before, that Attorney Harper and McLeer would participate in that. And then I'd also like to request that Madam Auditor participate, if she'd be so willing.
Certainly.
And then Mr. Vessley, with your own personal experience, if you're willing to invest your time, we'd appreciate that as well.
Sure.
So from the council's perspective, who would, who would else, who also would like to?
I wouldn't mind participating. I wouldn't mind participating, but, yeah, I would, but I think Dan.
All right, I have, I have Dan, I have Dan down on my list already.
Okay.
He's agreed to do it.
Well, and, and quite truthfully, you said it's going to be open and transparent, and I think anybody that wants to come and be on that committee should be able to.
Well, any one can attend, I'd like to know specifically who's going to be actively participating.
Right. Well, we can't get above six.
Oh, okay.
Can't get to six.
Okay. Well, how many have you got?
Got to say it's five or less.
We have five now.
You have five now?
That includes you, Mike?
Uh, well, we have Good, Blaney, Witten, Reavis, Jessup.
That's five or six?
So five.
That's five.
I don't mind having input, I just don't know when your meetings are going to be, and I'm pretty.
I'm available at any day job, yeah.
And to that point, all committee members will, or all foundation members will be aware of times and would be encouraged to.
Are we allowed to attend? Is, are we, then?
Just not yet.
No, you're not.
Oh.
Five is it. Yeah, you can, well, we.
Five is it. So Scott and Blaney is Mike.
I'd be there.
Five. I'd invite everybody.
You should probably be there as president.
So if you could just let us know how it goes?
Well, that would make sense.
I'll be, I'll stand if they're going to decide.
Now, that, uh.
Well, that's for the meeting, after your first meeting, if, you know, this is what we discussed, what's your input? Can you do it out in an evening?
And as, and as we further divide out the work, as we further divide out the work, then there may be other committee opportunities for people participating. Now, let me, and just a legal clarification on that, Scott, you mentioned five is the limit.
And once you get to six, you guys are in a foundation meeting.
Okay.
And.
And that's the kind, and that's the, that is the, that's what you're there as, is foundation members. So once you get to six, you're in a meeting, you're in a forum.
You have a corner.
Okay? So you got to be less than that, just why you can only have three council or one commissioner when we're in those roles, but in these roles, you can only have your foundation members, and five is the limit.
Okay.
Okay.
If you get to six, you got to start advertising that you're.
Yeah, then you got, someone's got to go, or you got to.
But didn't you say you started advertising anyway?
Yeah, I.
So then, definitely, you said that they're doing that, so.
No, sit and advertise it. I guess.
Good point.
I mean, that's, that's gallant, and I, I guess that's. Full of place, but my problem is that I don't know how much, the whole point of getting to the committee level is that you can sit in a room and have some frank discussions. Ultimately, the council, they're not making any decisions, they got to come back to the full foundation. If we change that scenario, that opens, those types of conversations are, become more difficult, I, I think we just stretch this process out indefinitely.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, well, that's, that certainly was.
But ultimately, what everybody has to remember, I don't care what five it is, you go anywhere and decide whatever you want to decide, if you come back, you got to, this, this board decides. This board's got to get six people. Period, end of story, or there just isn't an agreement, I mean.
Can we, can you explain that? Because I was always told it was ten voting members. So what has to be ten, what has to be majority? Can you clarify that?
Ten's all.
Ten to, is that only for the money? Why do?
Okay, look, if.
And for the principal?
Before the movie, the money moved to the foundation, so pre-foundation, there was a local ordinance that did not allow any of the hospital principals, the principal from the original sale, to be spent without a 10-O vote.
Okay, right.
It took 10-O to move the money to the foundation. Once it's at the foundation, the statute now controls the money. The statute says that the principal cannot be spent without 10 votes. Otherwise, it's a majority, the interest that is produced off of that money is a majority vote. What's the finite details of how and where and when and who? That's the stuff we need to go and try to come to an agreement on for the time being as to where those decisions are being made. And there is an avenue that this board can become a board that meets every month, that does a whole lot of heavy lifting. There's an avenue where some of that work is branched off, and if you, the council kind of gets into their area, the commissioners stay in their area, but ultimately, those are the discussions and the decisions that have to be made in the committee and then brought out and discussed to its full extent to the full foundation board in our normal meetings.
Thank you.
So in the spirit of confirming what, what, what we're doing here, there will be a committee that will work on some of the nuts and bolts of the work that needs to be done to further, further advance the foundation. The attorneys are going to be a part of it, the auditor will be a part of it, Mr. Vessley will be a part of it, and then the five foundation members that will participate will be Commissioners Good and Blaney, and then council, Councilman Witten, Reavis, and myself. And then we will put together, as we discuss information, and obviously, nothing's going to be decided upon in advance of a full foundation meeting.
Can't be.
And it won't be. And we'll be prepared to bring some working documents to prepare and to present to the foundation board so we can make some decisions that we need to make.
Right, I mean, you're bringing information, as I see it. The committee would be bringing information.
Recommendations.
Right, recommendations, information to the full board for us to eventually act. So we can get this all moving. Otherwise, we, we're going to, we're going to pound this out for the next 24 months, and I can.
Long.
Wait long enough. All right, so that, that concludes that, that discussion. Okay? Attorney's report.
Um, I think I probably talked earlier.
We were speaking on behalf of Harold, too.
And Harold also.
Yeah. Any other matter that may properly come before the board?
Mr. Rose, Mr. Dave Rose.
Oh, yeah.
Is no longer to, is no longer, he's retired, and so we need to have another member to serve as our non-voting members, so we need to, what, put out, can Scott RFP for possible?
We did an advertisement before, Joy, for those possible spots, I think we need to duplicate that language and ask for one and applications, have them do, when is our next council, when is our next foundation?
I think he's saying the right, the gentleman.
Aight, aight.
I think it's on the same day as the, our, our meeting, so it's the 26th.
Of September?
Yes.
Well, that's enough time for them to get apps in by then, and then by then, we can appoint, we'll have apps to be able to move on.
Do I need to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that Joy puts out an application so that we can replace Dave Rose, who has since retired from his bank, and that we want somebody from a porter, some tea.
That's be a local bank. And there's a list of, that, actually, that local bank is a term of art within the statute. There is a list of local banks that the state has that any of those people would qualify.
Second motion.
Motion on the floor that is a second to post and solicit people who are interested in becoming our third bank, banking representative in lieu, or as Mr. Rose has retired, and of course, we thank him for his, for his service to the board. Any discussion? I would, I would say, Mr. Vessley, I don't know if you have some friends in mind that might be good candidates that you'd like to bring on, bring along with you through this process? Do you have anybody you really want to punish? Somebody you want to get back at?
I'm going to be the last man to turn.
So, any, any additional discussions?
Just one real quick, if you, get the committee's opinion on this, but if you could lend yourself to be part of that committee discussion, I personally would, would appreciate that.
He's, he's already signed on.
Yeah, he's signed on.
Okay, good. Any other discussion?
No, I agree, Matt was very valuable in that last committee.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Karen. Any other matter that may properly come before the board? If not, this meeting is adjourned.